All right. Now I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. Roll call of attendance, please.
None.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to have an approval of the consent agenda and I will state that we're accepting contributions from the community from various groups and people for $7,600. All of those dollars will be used for the purpose intended by the donor but to better the give extra assistance to the programs that they're donated to and we thank you very much. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have no students or presentations tonight. Need a motion to approve the minutes of July 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have some information items, our calendar of events. Anybody like to call anything out? I suppose you want to talk about the Workshop Week.
And that's the next.
That'll come up on the next thing.
Yep.
Any other items? Anybody wants to call out?
I'd like to call out, oh, I'd like to call out on, it's probably not on our calendars yet, but just so everyone knows, on September 13th is when MSBA will be holding their advocacy night in the metro area, which is the same night as one of our meetings. I brought this up at the MSBA board meeting and asked them to check calendars next year. This year it's, it won't be as big of a deal. They're not inviting legislators to the advocacy night because so little happened in the last session, but we will not be able to attend that night unless you want to attend another session outstate. The next closest advocacy night for us would be about 75 miles away and I have those dates if you're interested.
Workshop Week schedule. Lynn.
Members of the board, I'm going to share just briefly some highlights of the Workshop Week. In your board packet you received, well, I'm not quite tall enough. Okay. In the board packet you received the whole Workshop Week calendar and there's a lot of information on that. So I thought I would just pull out a few things for you to highlight and if you want to just listen, that's fine, otherwise I have them for everyone to see on the back here on the presentation side. So first of all, this, even before Workshop Week starts, we really start, well, we've been working hard on looking at class placements, class lists, and so families should be receiving those in the elementary this next week. We're aiming for Wednesday, August 15th is when we're going to try to mail them out and that would be for the K through, K through five. And let me tell you, just by doing both jobs with, in Mark Hamery's role at Wildwood and then with my job too, within the district office, class placements is a time-consuming job. And we really want to make sure that we have those classrooms set up just great for the kids and the teachers and the families, so. And so that has been what we've been working on for a while. Now, bussing information will be mailed out to the elementary families, that will be coming the next week. We'll have the district-wide instructional leadership team meeting and typically on that meeting, we have, the morning is focused more as a group where we look at the district data, the afternoon we split up into the buildings and we'll just break out into building teams, and then the following day will also be more in building-specific teams. So if you'd like to attend and hear a little bit about some of the district data, it is still embargoed data, so we aren't able to share that yet with, until after August 30th, I believe is the date then we can. So if you come to that, we'd still have to just, it would be confidential information for planning purposes only for that district data. Then we start out with the new teacher workshop and orientation, which happens on, well, actually they're meeting with their mentors on the Wednesday of that week and they will be working in their classrooms at that time. And then on Thursday, we'll probably, we'll be going through more of a training for the new teachers and they'll hear a lot of different information throughout that whole day. So they'll have two pretty full days of information. Then on Thursday, we also have for some of the special education staff, it's the CPI, which is more of a de-escalation training and refresher course for the staff that were previously trained, so they will be, they will be doing that. Workshop Week events, then, starting on Monday, the 27th, this is the Special Education Synergy System Training, which will be happening really throughout the week for some of the special ed staff, and that's the student information system that they're changing to. So that'll be a new system for all special ed staff to be entering in that student information. Then Dr. Marcy Wood will be presenting on complex math instruction for the full Wildwood team in the afternoon. That will be from 12:30 to 3:30. She is here for three days, so then she'll be breaking off and doing small group sessions with kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers and second grade teachers at different times throughout that week, too. But that should be very interesting to start with the complex math instruction. We had a little intro to it last year when she was here, working with a small group of teachers and also she was sharing some of the information in her book. It all got started with Helen Enninger was reading her book on complex math instruction when we were going through the math review and she thought, "Well, wouldn't this be great if we could actually contact the author and find out a little bit more detailed information about this?" And when she contacted Dr. Wood, she was like, was thrilled to come up here and work with us and see us. So, so that'll be kind of fun to work on that throughout the next year. Then we have the workshop on Tuesday, middle school is the new student orientation, and then they also have the open house and student orientation then that afternoon to the evening. The early childhood open house for, and I, you know, most of the people are familiar with their first names for the early childhood teachers, so I have on there for Melinda's and Jean's class, will be that evening, and then for Bridget's and Anna's class will be the next, the 5:30 to 6:30 time. And that, more detailed information will be mailed out to the families, but I thought it'd be nice to share that with anyone who is following this, to read that. Then Wednesday, after, Wednesday morning is the big welcome back message and kind of the kickoff, and we have that for all staff in the Shiitakua. That will start at 10 o'clock and we normally have a school board presentation and then our introduction of the new teacher and the, or the teacher of the year, which is Mike Lynn Newman, and so she will be presenting that day, and then we have the special recognition and awards for later on. Lunch will be afterwards, right within the high school commons area, and high school in the afternoon has their orientation and their parent curriculum night. Then on Thursday, the paraprofessionals will be coming back. They, they may be back throughout the week before that, because on Monday, sometimes when buildings have their introducing new staff, pairs are welcome to come to that too if they'd like. But on Thursday, they know that this is the day they traditionally come in and really receive some of the training and updated information, so we will be seeing all the paraprofessionals back on Thursday. This year, the CPI, the ones that will need the CPI refresher course will be coming in the morning, and then the rest of the pairs will be joining us that afternoon for, we wanted to go with a luncheon this time, a luncheon and informational meeting to welcome them back. Then afterwards, they'll be going back to their buildings to work with the administrators and special ed leads, depending on what their assignment is for that year. Then OH Anderson has their open house that evening and so does Wildwood, 4:30 to 6:30. One thing about the open house, and we know there's a lot of families that may have kids at both buildings, there's that shuttle bus, so that they can take advantage of that, because parking is always an issue on those nights for the open house, so. Any questions? Well, and you guys are welcome to attend anything and if you have any questions or, as you're reading through the Workshop Week detailed thing, you can certainly call me, let me know, so, thank you.
Anybody?
It's a busy week coming up.
Thank you, Lynn. We need to talk about the Metro ExU.
Yes, and this one will relate to an action item later with TIES, and I'll do my best to kind of give you a brief summary and the reason, I'll give you kind of an overview about why this is a discussion item also. So with that, I'll kind of back up a little bit. So as TIES member districts, you know, you've been in the process of various approvals over the past few months regarding the resolution of TIES, or the dissolution of TIES, sorry. And so the, and TIES, it, when Sourcewell came to do a joint powers agreement with TIES, they realized what they really needed to do was form a new joint powers agreement over TIES member districts, and so I'm just going to kind of act it out a little bit. So what they did then is, so they created this new umbrella, a new joint powers with Metro ExU. And the reason you're hearing about it now is because we are also Metro ExU members, member district, and so Sourcewell and Metro ExU formed a new joint powers agreement called Sourcewell Technology, and all the Ties member districts then became limited members. And what this, this was the, the way in which Ties member districts were allowed to just become limited members and then have a much reduced cost for the services. So when it was going to be the dissolution of Ties, then it was a very expensive, you were paying to get out essentially, but with this new joint powers agreement, all Ties member districts continue as limited members for a much reduced cost. And so what I have here for you is that Metro, so Metro ExU, the executive committee did approve this joint powers agreement on Monday night, and in order for it to be ratified, they need to have the delegate, in their bylaws, the delegate assembly has to approve of it. The delegate for our district is Kevin Donovan, and so he would, he will need to approve the resolution, sign off on that as the delegate from this district. So, so that's kind of the overview, and so I can, I have, I have the, the agreement here in the board packet, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Lucy?
So with the change in the way the structure in the contract, we won't have that large payout to Ties that we're expecting, that will be a budgetary savings, considering we were expecting to pay out that large piece.
Right, and so you've already, you've already done all that with Ties? And so what Sourcewell, and so actually that bill has already been paid as the, the lower bill than it was going to be initially. So you've already, you actually already approved that part? Sourcewell Technology is asking for, they want all ExU member districts also to kind of say, "Yes, we understand what's happening and agree to it." So, and so I'll also add to that, as a Metro ExU member, there is no liability to Metro ExU. Sourcewell Technology is taking on all of the liability and, and also there will be a contribution, an annual contribution to Metro ExU from Sourcewell Technology as well. So this is just benefiting Metro ExU and it is not as though we're entering into another joint powers that will go terribly wrong. It's really, it's intended to, it's intended to help support Ties member districts and also support Metro ExU, so.
Other questions?
Do we know, I understand the transition with all the software programs and Patrick's very much on top of that and all that's happening. Do we know what's happening to the Ties Technology Conference that used to be held in December?
Oh, I, I don't know. I have not seen anything about it, so I won't speculate. Nope.
Anybody else? You know, what I didn't say at the beginning of the meeting is, this is our first, we're going to use the superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's true. I need to put a bag over my head. Barbara Duffin, you've all been, welcomed to, welcomed her in the Globe and you've seen articles about her and all that, but this is the first time she's actually been in the superintendent chair in this meeting, and we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm happy to be here.
I'm sorry I was a little late to do that.
Well, no, it's okay, you know, and as it is, I just hope you all understand that I'm going to be processing a little more slowly than maybe you're used to too, because this is my first time through, so.
That's okay, we like slow.
Okay, well, well, good thing, so.
We do have some action items. We need to approve the 2019 school board meeting schedule.
So moved.
Do you want to present it first?
Um, I, I think that, let me just pull that up.
It does speak for itself.
It does, I think, you know, second and, second and fourth Thursdays for the most part. There is spring break, because of spring break, the meeting will be on March 7th with the first Thursday, otherwise second and, second and fourth Thursdays, and then there's also the school board retreat scheduled in there in July, so.
I did want to point out, on the February 14th, there's no school the 15th, that Friday and the following Monday, so just probably should have that on our radars if people are scheduling trips out of town.
And it's Valentine's Day.
And it's Valentine's Day, so just that, it was worth mentioning.
It's worth mentioning.
And would there be another meeting where we may discuss changing the weekday of our meetings, possibly, in the future?
That would certainly be up to you if we wanted to, to look at the calendar and, and make changes.
Changing from Thursdays?
Yes.
There's a novel idea.
Many districts in the metro have their meetings on Mondays or Tuesdays. Thursday is, is more unusual for meeting dates and.
I would say we could talk about that in the study session?
Sure.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor approving the meeting schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
We need to approve a resolution relating to closing open enrollment. Dr. Duffin?
Well, I appreciate that you called me Dr. Duffin, but I'm truly just Ms. Duffin.
Okay.
Okay, just, well, that's fine too. I'm comfortable with that as well.
Just doctor.
Just, yeah, you can, however you'd like. So I, we have before you a resolution and I want to just kind of introduce this as just really making clear to everyone that we are so thankful that so many families choose our district. We know that we have quality programming, proven academic excellence and a really strong school community, and so we're really thankful for the number of families that want to choose, who choose to be here with us. And, and we know that when parents choose our schools, our families choose our schools, we all benefit from those collaborative relationships that we form. It gives us increased academic opportunities and lots of volunteering energy and relationships, and so we're really very thankful for all the, all the families, both inside and outside the district that choose us. And so one of the things that's really important to Bonham Eady is the small school. We, we aim to be a small district. We aim to have small class sizes at the elementary below the Metro ExU average. We want the middle school model and we aim to be a, a high school of 1,200, and so for that reason, we can't take all the families who apply in open enrollment, and it's a difficult thing for us to do every year. And that said too, we want to be respectful of those families who are waiting to hear whether or not they made it in and are hopeful. We know making a choice about where you go to school is just so important, and so we want to make sure that all the families have time to make those plans and to, and to find the right fit for their, their student. And so for that reason, the resolution is before you to close open enrollment for the school year. We feel as though we are, we have the right balance of open enrolled students and class size and, and within our building guidelines, and so we're putting that resolution before you for that reason.
We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
So we're not closing transitions, because we have students coming in and out of that program throughout the year?
Right, this is, this is for.
Right. Mm-hmm. Well, if we have families on waitlist for transitions, will they be communicated with also, so they're aware that it's not closing that program?
Thank you, that's a, that's a good point. It, it is the K-12 program that we're closing, not transitions, and we will make clear that, that no one takes it that way, so we'll, we'll double check on that. I'm not aware, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that, honestly, and so.
Transitions is new for us.
And it's a wonderful program, by the way. I did get a tour, so some pretty amazing things going on there as well, but we'll make sure that's taken care of. Thank you.
And can we also make sure that when we say it's closed, that's just for this year and applications will begin anew in?
September. On the first day of school, we start again, accepting open enrollment for the following year.
So that we don't get a rumor out there that we're closed and people never bother applying.
And, and you asked me a question at one point. We did have students open enroll in every grade level, so it wasn't just, we're only taking them in certain grade levels. We looked at every grade level, we looked at the size of our classes, and we went through that, the guidelines that we had set forth, and so it's, it's just that we're at that point, so.
Any additional comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We also need to have a resolution to, relating to the election of our school board. This coming fall, in the November election, three of our school board members that we rotate every couple of years are up for election, so we need to call for the general election. Ms. Duffin?
Well, and you, no, I don't. You just didn't, you just did a great introduction to that, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, Lucy?
I was just going to comment that the filing period for the board seats that will be on the ballot will close on August 13th, 14th. Thank you. Some districts are the 13th, August 14th, so if there are community members who are interested in running for the board, they would come in and meet with Laura and file through her office.
By August 14th. You have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to approve the resolution ratifying and approving the Ties reorganization. Ms. Duffin?
Okay, and again, you have, you have gone through this, you've signed the agreements, there's nothing new here. This is, is truly Sourcewell Technology wanting to make it clear where we finally landed in all of this. There were some things that were up in the air back in June when Superintendent Larson brought, brought what, where they were at the time to you. So the final resolution is before you. It includes an amendment. There were some clarifications from some, some of the districts about the building sale, so although there is, you are, we are now limited members to Sourcewell Technology, we still have the building that Sourcewell Technology did not take on the liability for the building, solely the operating, the operation of Ties. And so, so there was some clarification that member districts wanted and that's where the amendment came from, but in front of you is, is nothing that you haven't discussed already. It's just the final, everything is, is done. Sourcewell Technology wanted to be sure that, that it was really clear to all Ties member districts.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Your second. A further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The last action item I want to bring up is, is the fact that we don't, we have an enrollment committee that we really don't use very much anymore since we've come to some agreements about open enrollment, and I'm proposing that that enrollment committee again become the personnel committee. The personnel committee. So if we needed to have, because we left personnel kind of up in the air, if we needed a personnel committee, we could call everybody, whoever could come, could come. So just to formalize it, that that enrollment committee would now be the personnel committee. That's my proposal.
Do you need a motion for it?
We need a motion for it.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I have a question. So there's currently three people appointed to the enrollment committee. Would those now be the appointed, or do you want to keep it where personnel is, whoever's most first available?
I think the three people that are on the enrollment committee are now on the personnel committee.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we understood that.
Oh, okay.
Any additional discussion?
Oh, I guess, do we, can we just confirm who's on that? I have that it's Mike, you and me?
I believe that's right.
Okay. I just want to, point of clarification.
Need a motion to approve? Do you have a motion? I have a motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any committee reports?
I do not have one.
MSBA.
Julie, anything? I just have that there are still tickets available for the May 30th anniversary gala at the Delwood Country Club on Friday, November 9th, and you can buy tickets on the website. The, the band will be Louis Groove, so.
It's hard to believe that group is 30 years old.
I know.
And I was here when it started, that's what's really hard. MSBA?
So MSBA held their summer seminar on Monday this week, and Stacy, Julie, Barb and I attended that. We had a great opening speaker on grit and mindset, which aligned with a lot of the work that's happening in our district, and so it's a very good thing to attend. Lot of good breakout sessions on tiered licensure, personalized learning are the two I attended, and then a closing session on school security. So I have my folder with me if anyone wants to see the materials from that meeting, where I talked about the MSBA advocacy night. I've let the MSBA folks know that we would not be in attendance, so they would know that we're not ignoring them, but we have a board meeting that night. September 28th resolutions are due to MSBA for the legislative platform. The delegate assembly, Julie McGraw is our rep on that, she has a two-year term, so she is still our rep, and there are no open seats to run for, and that'll be December 1st. The leadership conference at the convention center, you should have gotten the brochure in the mail this week, I think I got mine yesterday, so that'll be coming up. For your calendar going forward, day at the Capitol will be March 25th, and the national conference will be held March 30th through April 1st.
All right. I just had one comment, Lucy. The last two or three years, you and Kevin and I have got together to come up with a resolution from our board. Is there anyone that has interest or a topic you would like to see proposed to the legislature?
I know some of our, I think it'd be good to review our resolutions from past years that have not survived, or we had a resolution actually last year on dyslexia, and to see if we, where that lies right now within that platform, to see if that needs to be brought forward again, and so if people are interested, I'd be glad to meet and, and take a look at that, maybe in the coming weeks. I know in the past it's been the three of us, I don't know if other people are interested or want us to do the same thing we've done in the past and come forth with a recommendation.
I wouldn't mind sitting in on the discussion just to get up to speed with what was discussed in the past and come, I can't think of anything offhand, but.
Usually we've done with a group of three, so we'd have to figure out who would step down.
Depends on the time, though, so if it's evening, yeah, but if it's during the day, I cannot, so.
Might we touch base with Kevin?
Okay.
We can just set a date and see who's available. We've typically had to gather probably twice to write, come up with ideas, to come up with ideas and write the resolutions, so.
All right. Thank you. The 916 board notes are in your packet, but I do want to say that they're having some difficulty at 916 employing enough staff. They needed to hire 32 teachers this year, and as of the last board meeting last week, they had 21 of the teachers. They needed 72 education assistants. I don't know the number that they're at, I think they're in the 40s, maybe 50s, so they, they did send out a message to our administration that this may impact whether or not they can accept our students' referrals until they get optimal staffing. They're always short staffing, I mean, that's true, which affects the budget and all of that, but it's a huge deficit here in terms of, of what they have. The other part is that the new Cora building is opening, I think some of you are going to the open house, it used to be Capital View, next week, but that's going to be a phenomenal building that houses about five programs offered by 916. So that is really, I think we're done building now our, our big building projects, and the goal of 916 right now is to work with member districts to see how they can help us reduce the number of referrals. How can they be helpful to us to keep our students in our district to have to not refer them, so that we no longer have to look at more buildings, so. Anything else? Any subcommittees?
I have, from the community ed committee, I just want to point out, as you know, that they got an activity bus, and it's already been used three times, so I think that's a great start. Also want to point out, the 2018 fall brochure just went out and registration began yesterday. I've already signed my boys up for a couple of after-school classes, so I, I love the programming that they offer, so I hope people will check that out. And also did want to point out, there, as you know, we've had a series of events focused on equity, and there is, that will continue through this next year, and the program is called "The Many Faces of the White Bear Lake Area," and so this will be in a number of places you can find the information, but I think it's worth checking out to see if you're available for the dates that these discussions will take place.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Duffin?
So everything you've said reminded me of something else, and that wasn't on my list, and so I've been adding to my list as I go, I'm sorry about this, so it became longer. So I do have a picture, though, of the community ed bus, because, and are you going to put that up? So look at this. So I needed you to see this, because, look at, I mean, look at those faces, they're so excited about this bus, and that's just, so you need, you need to see what you, you know, what you had been hearing about, and I, I know they're very excited about that, so, so there it is, for all of you to see, so.
Great bus.
Yes, so that, and that.
So that, and that was, um, paid for through both community ed and, um, a grant from the Lions, I think. And now I'd have to look back and, and see, um, in the notes because that was from before I was here. But, um, but that's very, that's a very exciting, um, thing. And so, um, I also wanted to highlight, you may have seen this. This just came out on the 8th, um, a cooperative effort between the public, our Madam Edai Public Schools, um, Community Education, MAF, um, the Madam Edai Education Association and the PTO, um, a stuff the bus, we're going to use that bus and stuff the bus full of, um, school-related items for students, um, in the Madam Edai School District. So we're putting it to good use in multiple ways. So, um, I wanted you to highlight, help us stuff the bus. And there's a box out there I saw in the, um, entryway and then there's more information on the flyers here. So, so help us stuff the bus. Um, and, um, when you were talking about 916, so one of the things that's been so great for me as, um, a new superintendent is just getting to meet people in the community. And one of the people I got to meet was Judd Marshall, um, our mayor, who told me he was on, and I don't mean to get too mu- to be too starstruck about this, but as a, as a teacher, um, I used to be a teacher in Roseville, so I know the importance of, of 916 in particular, but also just in, in, in general, and the idea of districts collaborating to create something new and to really serve our students, um, in ways that we couldn't do on our own. And so Judd Marshall was on the founding board of 916, which was a little tidbit that I learned. And so, um, so that was exciting for me. Um, and so when you mentioned that, I just, I couldn't help but look back there and think I needed to mention that as well. Um, and, um, I, too, when I attended, um, the MSBA conference, I do want you to know, I don't know if I told you this before, but I was approached by, um, a board member from Red Wing. Did I tell you this story? So she came up to me and she said, and found out where I was, I was from, and, um, mentioned that our school board apparently, um, sets the bar very high for all other school boards. And she did tell me, she said, you are so fortunate to be working with people who know how to do their job and advocate, you were mentioning, um, advocate at the legislator, legislature, that you're always present and you're always active. So, um, that was completely unsolicited. She just came over to me and she told, and she told me I needed to know that. So, so I feel very fortunate. Um, I also attended the MDE, um, Back to School Workshop for a couple of days. Um, and, uh, I think the big takeaway there I, I'd like you to know about is that, um, due to ESSA, the school report card is going to be looking differently, um, looking different this time around. Um, it's, they showed us some samples of what it would look like. I'm not really clear what that's really going to look like for an individual district or school, um, but there will be different things that are reported. Um, there's going to be some kind of banner sort of system as well. And I, I don't know exactly what that will be, but do know that that will be different and it'll be communicated differently than it has been in the past. And finally, I did want to, oh, I also wanted to highlight that I did get to go to Snow White today, the community ed play, Snow White. Um, I got a tour of the, the area from one of our students, one of the techni- the high school student who is the, is working as the technical director. And it was fun to learn how she was mentoring all the younger students and, and how to work the lighting and everything. And everyone was very proud of their work and it, it was a, it was a fabulous play. And I'm just, I just love middle school students on stage in general. And there were younger students, too, but like middle school students being very dramatic, but on stage, I really do appreciate that. So I, 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 I have a place in my heart for middle school students. So that I, I really enjoyed myself. Um, and finally, even though she's not here today, I did want to point out that Julie Osterbauer is, is frankly amazing. And we've had a number of paving projects and resurfacing projects and she just keeps on going. And, um, there was one day she was outside at 5:00 AM. There were a number, there was something going on, a, a paving project at Wildwood and she was meeting, um, people who wanted to go on a, they wanted to park there because at 5:00 AM they're going to park there and then go on a gateway, um, bike tour or something. And so she had to be, she was helping people move their cars and she was out there in her, um, her yellow vest. So I, I do appreciate the work that she's been doing because there have been a lot of, a lot of things to juggle this summer, so.
Really kudos to her. She is remarkable. She could put the Energizer Bunny to, I mean, remarkable. We don't appreciate her enough, I think.
So. Um, so those are the things I wanted to highlight, except to also say thank you for the warm welcome. It's been quite remarkable, just all the people who have been, who have either sent me letters or, um, emailed me or called me or just gone out of their way to introduce themselves and just do anything, you know, over and over again, whatever you need, whatever I can do to help you. So thank you so much. I feel very welcome to here and I feel very fortunate.
We're fortunate to have you.
Well, thank you.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.